There's no minutes on that. Good evening. Let me convene this Concord Township Zoning Commission meeting of Tuesday, August, October the 4th with a call to order. Heather, if you could, please.
Mr. Schindler?
Present.
Mr. Langenfelter?
Here.
Mr. Ruppert?
Here.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Ifalise?
Here. Thank you, Heather. Next, first item, really, the first item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of September the 6th, 2022. Any discussion from the members?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
He never disappoints.
You are duly recognized as normally.
Thank you.
Yes.
First comment is on page 27, line item 21.
Page 27?
Yeah, of the small pages.
Right, page 27.
Page 27, line item 21. Who is Mr. Brown?
They didn't have anything to offer anyway, so it doesn't matter.
Mr. Chairman, that was the resident that was here in the audience.
Oh, it was?
Yeah, it's Tom Brown. He's just, we know him because he comes to several other township meetings, so.
Okay. Answered that one?
Okay.
And then, page 49, this one is really picky. Page 49, line item 24. Did you see that one?
Yes.
We just have a font problem. It's smaller print. Everything else is the same print size, and then Chairman Ifalise's ISPD is tinier. That's all. Threw me off, spelling. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Seems relatively minor.
Yeah, sure was.
So we were font challenged. Any other comments, members? Do I have a motion for approval of the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes as corrected.
I have a motion. Second.
All second.
Second, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstained because I wasn't here.
Thank you, Rich. The minutes stand approved for September the 6th. Next item on our agenda is correspondence. Any correspondence that the members have received or wish to report? Frank?
Mr. Chairman, none for me.
Hiram?
None for me, Mr. Chairman.
I have nothing to report as well. Andy?
Nope.
And Rich?
I did have one item, and Heather's already handling it, where the developer in my neighborhood is not putting in locating pins on the lots, and a neighbor complained about that. A new neighbor, new construction. So she's got them under control, right?
Working with the county to address that. It's a requirement of the developer to do that. It's part of the subdivision requirements.
So, I'm sorry, locating pins for the property line?
Yeah, the property corners, yeah, the pins on the sublots.
Okay.
That, yeah. They're not there, which is actually impacting where the open space is in the RCD, so these owners don't necessarily know where their lot lines ends and the open space begins, and I've already seen clearing and lawn being planted in.
Growing backyards.
Well, it's interesting. Lots have been platted, recorded, but not.
Correct, but no pins have been set as per the subdivision requirements, and on the site plans that are submitted for the zoning permits that indicate that the pins are there.
Okay. Thank you, Rich. If there's nothing else, move on to public participation. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to address the zoning commission this meeting or items on the agenda? If not, thank you. Well, we'll move on to new business, and we have a couple site plans here this evening, beginning with Site Plan Review Application Number 53 submitted by Steve Moore for a new commercial building for outside design custom pools and spas to be located at 7085 Ravenna Road, also known as current parcel number 08-A-014-0-00-067-0. If I could ask, Moore, come up to address the board, please give your name and address.
My name is Steve Moore. I'm with Outside Design Pools. My current address is Sepulveda, 8216 Lily Lane, Concord Township.
If you could, please, Steve, overview of the project, your objectives, please.
Okay. So, two years ago, my wife and I purchased some property in Concord Township, 7085 Ravenna Road. It is just under five acres. Our intentions are to build a facility for our business. That facility would house trucks, equipment. We would have a very minor showroom for customers to come to. It would be our place of business. Our intention also is to build the facility a little bit bigger than what we currently need, so it is a sizable building. We would not occupy everything right off the get-go, but eventually we will grow into it.
Can you describe further the building? So, there's two garage spaces on the north, and those are the two that will shell?
Yes. So, on the north end of the property, there are, would be two, we're calling them units on the plan, just for clarity. So, when we bid the project out, so it's broken up into four, four or five different sections. So, those would be just rough shell, no major utilities. We would do all the underground work for it right off the get-go, but as far as finishing those out, we would do those at a later date. But our section that we would occupy immediately is the largest section of that building, and then the office section to the right. But we prepared the plan, so every individual space would have its own metering, its own utilities for possibly future use. I don't know what the future leads to, so I want to be prepared for it. I would rather bear the expense, it's cheaper on the front end, to do all that work than it is at a later date of redo work.
So, for the occupied space, can you describe, the occupied space, showroom, warehouse?
So, the major building portion would be brick, block, stone, with a flat roof. There's some ceiling heights in there that are 20 to 22 feet tall, just for our equipment. And then on the front of that is a two-story office. The upstairs would be just file storage and additional space down the road, but we would occupy the first floor in it right now with office personnel, a little bit of showroom on that to showcase our product. We would not be open to the public. That's our intention right now, at least, unless it's by appointment. It's only, our customers only. We would not be open like a Walmart or something like that, where people could just walk in the doors. That's not my intention. I never wanted to do that. We would never sell any retail out of this location. It would just be, like I said, our clientele coming in to view product, to make their selections, and to review plans.
It includes your distributor for spas, and you designed custom pools. Does that make sense?
We do, yes.
I understand. It's a challenging site.
It is.
No doubt. A lot of engineering going into that project, so. Could I ask Heather maybe to overview the staff report then, please?
Sure.
I'm sorry, Steve, unless you had anything else to present?
No, like you said, it's a challenging site. We've worked with Hess over, I don't know, Heather, the last year, maybe. I think they've put together a pretty good plan. I've gone to them a few times and made some, maybe at first, some significant changes, just because of the grade of the property. I believe there's almost 14 feet from end to end.
Yeah.
So, and to avoid a major cut or a major backfill, we had to consider all that. And that's why the building in the middle of it stepped down by two or three feet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We might want to stay up there. I'm sure members will have some questions for you, Mr. Chairman. Heather, if you could overview the staff report for us, please?
Sure, I can do that. So, everyone has a copy of the staff report. Just some background of the site. It is just north here of Town Hall, on the east side of Ravenna Road, south of I-90. The property directly to the north is a small access to the Greenway Corridor that the Metro Parks uses to access the corridor. To the south of that is the Old Stone School, where the community garden is, township runs, and then there's residential across the street. The applicant did get a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals for the parking area that is behind the building, so it won't be viewable from, visible from Ravenna, to build that as gravel rather than asphalt or concrete. So that's why you see that reflected on the plans. Utility-wise, they are going to be on an onsite septic system that's been already approved by the Lake County General Health District and the Ohio EPA, so all of that is in order. They are avoiding repairing an area to the north where there's a stream. There's an existing culvert where there used to be a drive that, years ago, the property owners just used to kind of access the property for regular maintenance, or maybe dumping up the extra dirt that's been taking place over the years. But they are avoiding that repairing an area as well. Right now, they're meeting all the requirements for the parking. Depending on what kind of tenants in those future units, parking could be a little challenging, might require a little bit more parking if those uses change other than warehouse type, because that's how we slated it per the zoning currently. Also, the county engineer has reviewed the trip generation report. They are okay with the current use of the property, but have given some comments to the owner regarding, you know, future use could require some additional studies or information to make sure that that, the access drive is still going to be appropriate for whatever the future use of the property might be. Landscaping, they did provide a landscape plan. I do have a couple comments on that, and I do know that the property owner has already kind of contacted his team regarding some of the staff recommendations or conditions on the approval here. So, you can see all the other agencies' comments. I don't necessarily need to go through all of those, but I am recommending approval, a conditional approval with some conditions. There's a few things that need to change in order to be compliant with zoning. The first, well, and I don't know if you want me to, I don't need to go through all, if you want me to go through these, I can, otherwise, we can go through them with the applicant at that appropriate time. There's some pedestrian walks that are leading up to the office area that need to be pulled back away from the building in order to provide that required landscaping between the building wall and sidewalk. So that kind of, those kind of are my comments. Two, and three, and four, kind of, all kind of go together. It's related to the same issue there, because there's some columns that kind of come out from the entryways, too, that where the sidewalks were proposed initially on the site plan. It looked like it was going to interfere with folks being able to actually, you know, traverse those sidewalks. So by moving those out, it makes it compliant with the zoning requirements, and I think it works better for people going into the building itself. If there's going to be any ground-based mechanical equipment, I believe the electric plan that was submitted showed that there was an air conditioning unit on the one side of the building on the ground. We do require some screening on there, so requesting that to be shown on the landscape plan. And then, as far as the building design, just need to make sure that when the final building plans are submitted, that if there's going to be any rooftop mounted equipment, that those are going to be shielded. Also, and at this point, I don't believe you're actually planning on a freestanding sign, are you, Steve?
You are.
You are going to do a freestanding sign?
You are.
Okay, okay.
There was one, there was one comment, I believe, from Soils and Waters, that the sign location was in, within, or too close to the riparian setback.
Yeah.
So, they wanted us to move it, and actually Chip was working on that today to get that straightened out.
Okay, yeah, moving that a little bit out of that area would probably be better for the.
Yeah, and then also the sidewalks. He, I sent you earlier today the plan.
Yes.
That I changed that.
Okay.
So I just have to finish that, my landscape plan, according to that site plan. So, I'll get that taken care of this weekend.
Okay, yeah. And so, just as a reminder, to the freestanding signage and the wall signage, you'll need to get separate permits before those go up, so we can review those and make sure that we're compliant with the resolution as well. And then, just a reminder that they, that the applicant will need to revise the plans and resubmit directly to Lake County Stormwater and Engineer, and work with the Fire Department to address any of the concerns that they mentioned in the staff report as well.
Oh, thank you, Heather. Of the staff conditions, anything of note? Obviously, you've shared this with Mr. Moore. Anything of note that may not be doable on your part?
There was from, I think, Lake County Storm. There apparently is a minor issue with the neighboring property, because of neighboring property, across the road, they have a pond. And that pond actually drains under the roadway and onto our property. So, I believe that Lake County wanted it, wanted the engineer to go out and measure the neighbor's pond to find out how much water comes from the pond, so we knew how much water we were taking. So I know Hess and Associates is in talks or trying to figure that out, but I'm not interested in going over to neighboring property and measuring their pond. It doesn't belong to me. So, I, in lieu of that, we're going to propose to match the box culvert that's under the current roadway, and Hess is actually going to stop out and check it out this week here. We believe it's a 36-inch box culvert, and as long as we match that on our driveway apron, we should meet the requirement. But Hess is working on that, to figure that out.
Okay. Board see that on the site plan that he's referring to?
Yes.
You can see it on the, there's a culvert coming across, which, quite frankly, it doesn't impact much, because it's really flowing the other way, going north, so, okay.
Originally, we were just going to leave the existing culvert in there. There's been no sign of overflow, you know, since I've owned it at least, and previous owner, we're just going out with the previous owner, said he was, said there was no sign of overflow, so.
Is that on the north side of the property? North side or south side?
It's on the north end.
On the north end?
Yeah.
The, and the, there was a separate plan, Board of You have seen the separate plan for the septic system, which lies to the due east, southeast of the property, and there's a water connection for water. So, the site plan, I think is well done. I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of grading, a lot to deal with on that site. So, the entrance driveway and drive to the rear and to the front is all concrete, and then it's gravel in the rear.
Correct.
Your timetable for construction?
I'm hoping sprint.
Sprint, okay. Let me, let me ask the board members for questions, comments. I'll begin with Frank.
Heather, did I, you made the comment, tenants, are there going to be other tenants or just you, your company? And you're not leasing out that area for other people, are you?
Not, not currently. That's not, that's not what we were going to do, but we are possibly building the building big enough to entertain that idea. I have to retire someday, and my thought is, build the building big enough while I can afford it now, and at a later date, I'll entertain, if that's even possible, to rent it out to somebody else.
I'm assuming probably similar to what you do now.
That's my, that would be my goal. If I would keep the building at a later date, and, you know, if I become, I guess, a landlord, I would want, I think I'm pretty particular about who I would have in there. They have to be neat and clean, and I can say that about myself. I mean, we're a very neat, clean company. It's going to be no garbage, no broken-down trucks, no piles of garbage laying everywhere. I can guarantee that.
Thank you. That's right. Thank you, Frank.
Hiram, you had mentioned that you're putting as much into this as you can anticipate. The comment coming from, site plan review comments with respect to the road, it's not the best, it's too close to the drive for the Greenway Corridor. And then it goes on to say, "Any future changes in lane may present an issue that will need to be addressed at that time." That's going to be pretty darn expensive at that time. Do you want to address it now?
No, because at that time, we're only talking that the building is 75 feet off the road, so at that date, I'm only talking a 75-foot-long driveway. This driveway that we're putting in is fairly lengthy, so it would be, this is the best-case scenario right now. I have to, you know, I consulted with Chip Hess also, and this is the best access to the property currently, right now. We're going to be pulling out of this driveway with trucks and trailers. I shouldn't say "we," my employees. I have to be careful about where I'm having my employees pull out of this driveway at, and that is the best-case scenario right now, given the hills to the, that would be to the south, and the bridge deck to the north. That, this gives them the most amount of reaction time of where it's at.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. I had one question on SWP3, which is the stormwater, I think that's stormwater? I'm looking at this whole thing, and I see FS up in the upper portion of the drawing. And I don't see any legend that tells me what FS is. Is that a fence? It looks like a fence to me, but I don't know.
Mr. Ruppert, it's more than like a filter sock.
Yeah.
Is that a filter sock?
Yes.
Okay.
Rather than silk fence, they do filter socks.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. It's FS, or SF.
I know.
So there's a little transposition.
Okay.
A little transposition.
No winner, I couldn't find that.
SF, FS, yes.
I did have a question, another question, on the onsite sewage treatment disposal. The grading doesn't, this doesn't work for me. I'm looking at three of six, and things flow around the back, right next to the tanks, and then it flows, I don't know, but it flows all the way around, 829, 830, 831. It just doesn't seem to, it surrounds the mound. I just had a question on that. That's all. I just had a question on somewhere there. The water flows, green water, and you want to keep that away from all the septic stuff. That's all.
Right, but did the approval change, or it didn't change the septic approval, but it based on the drive?
You've received the Health Department approval for the septic system. I saw that.
Correct.
Correct?
Yes.
So, while I agree with Hiram's observation, it's on a slope, it's on the hill, it's on the hillside.
Yeah.
You have another, another item?
Yeah, I do someplace in here.
I can come back to you?
Yeah, please.
With, in regards to the septic, we did have soil, soil samples taken.
Yeah.
And, as you know, that property is, somebody's moved soil on it at some point within the last 20 years. So, that location for the septic is a virgin area, so that was kind of our only option.
Understood. Thank you. The system provides for an interceptor drain around the hole.
Yeah.
Presumably, it's.
And it's, it is on a mound.
Yeah.
It's on a hill.
Come back to you, Hiram, Andy?
Yes, please.
Oh, I was captivated.
Were you?
Yes.
We can remain with Hiram if you'd like.
No, I see him struggle. I can't find what he's looking for.
Let's move on.
Yes, let's move on. I mean, the only, the only thing that concerns me is the, just making sure that, with regards to the staff recommendations and conditions and things of that nature, that you're, there isn't anything, aside from what we've already discussed, that you're concerned with, or you have any, you'll have any issues meeting. So, that's always my, that's always my concern. So, I, you know, I'm sure it'll be a quality project. You're a quality man, and you run a quality business, and I have no doubts that it'll be, it'll be a nice addition to the township, so, looking forward to it. Good stuff.
Can you help with the interest rates?
I wish.
Rich?
I have a question, Steve, just a product question. Your pools, are any of the pools you install the large fiberglass ones that take big trucks to bring in and out? Have to be stored outside?
Not, not currently, no.
Okay.
What we do is, is all 100% in-ground, and they're all concrete, which is referred to as gunite in our industry.
I've had two neighbors, I live far from you, and I've had two neighbors put in big fiberglass ones, and they're massive, and big trucks come up the hill, and then they dig the hole, and they have to take a big crane and lift it in, but they have to be stored outdoors somewhere, so you'd have to put them out back if you had that product one. But yours are concrete?
They're all concrete.
Okay.
Not to say that we won't change to that eventually.
Right.
But not, I have no plans on doing that.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, Rich?
No, I'm good.
I'll come back to Hiram?
No.
No.
I'm good, I'm good.
In, in the B2, because Frank asked about tenants, you described tenants, so in the future, any tenant has to comply with the zoning in B2 anyway. Correct, Heather?
Yes.
In terms of general business. And, and I did have to ask Heather, and perhaps the board members realize, there's no building plan here, because B2 does not require a building plan approval, review and approval from us, from this board, so, thanks for what I'm correct.
You did have the rendering zone you're packing, though, right?
I sure did.
Okay, sorry.
Yes, yes. That's what prompted my question.
Okay.
We have building plans, building plan, review and approval. Uh, in terms of the, the, the site plan, concept, the way it's presented, I, I have, I have no other comments or, or questions. I think that's, I can see why it took a while to engineer the site. Probably went through a number of iterations, I'm sure. So I don't have any other comment or question. I believe then to, to Andy's point, for the record, in considering a motion, I would have to read the conditions of the approval into the record. Am I correct on that?
Um, you could, the law director would agree. I mean, I, I don't know if he could just state that as per the staff afford items. Uh, one through 11.
Just indicate that, uh.
Okay, I can just reference the staff
Right.
recommendations.
Correct.
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Never heard you read them into the record.
That's sorry.
No, that's okay. That's where I was going. Uh, so, well, the, the motion would have to read the recommendations here from the staff for a conditional, if we elect to do a a conditional approval.
Would have to be in the affirmative.
Right, right. So that would be the motion. Am I correct? Whoever makes the motion would read the conditions.
I believe so, yes.
Yes, yes. Okay.
Um, we haven't done that in the past.
We haven't.
No. We said, based upon your staff recommendations, as provided in this report.
It's documented, so. It's part of the record.
Part of the record. Just indicate that the applicant agrees to read all the conditions.
I have legal counsel here that suggested I read it into the record, so. Read it into the record.
Okay. Why don't you read it then and we'll say add it noted.
So if this, this board were to make a, a, a motion for a conditional approval, the conditional approval will based, be based upon the following conditions. Number one, lot dimensions and survey data will be shown, clearly identify the boundary lines, corner pins and dimensions of the parcel. Two, pedestrian walks are shown, but shall be moved out five feet from the building to allow for required planting area, except at main points of ingress, egress and loading areas. Move the proposed walks near the office portion of the building five foot from the building to provide for planting area per landscape requirement. Number three, foundation layout on the civil plans do not show the bump outs near the doorways clearly. Sidewalks, as shown currently, will interfere with these supports. Show the bump outs on the layout plan and adjust the sidewalks and landscaping to accommodate. Number four, revise the landscape plan as necessary to reflect the relocation of the sidewalk and planting area. Number five, any ground-based mechanical equipment not provided for on the plans, such as a transformer or generator, must be screened in accordance with section 38.08. Show the proposed AC unit on the south side of the building. Number six, all mechanical pertinences on the rooftop and all visible equipment mounted on the side of the building shall be shielded from public view and adjoining developments. The shielding shall be integrated into the architecture of the building in terms of massing, materials and details. The shielding for the mechanical pertinences on the roof shall be part of the roof form. Number seven, move the proposed freestanding sign out of the repair and setback to a different location while still maintaining the minimum 10 foot setback from the front lot line. Number eight, any proposed signage shall be reviewed separately in accordance with the sign requirements outlined in section 30 of the zoning resolution. Number nine, revise the final plans and resubmit to the Lake County Stormwater addressing the above mentioned comments. Number 10, revise the final plans and submit to the Lake County Engineer addressing the above mentioned comments. And number 11, work with the county, core township fire department to address the building plans, fire flow needed, needed, and use groups of the building, proposed building as outlined above. Do I have a motion to, for a conditional approval based upon those conditions as noted by our staff?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we conditionally approve application number 53 with the stated, the aforementioned staff recommendations, including the conditions as appropriate.
I have a motion for a conditional approval. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Second. Heather, call the board, please.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Repper?
Yes.
Mr. Lingenthaler?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Eifelis?
Yes. Application number 53 stands approved. He was born. Congratulations and good luck with the project.
Easy, easy, lemon, squeeze. Have a nice evening, Steve.
Our next item on the agenda, site plan review application number 54, submitted by HSB Architects and Engineers for an expansion of the school at the Auburn Career Center located at 10985 Gerda Road, also known as current parcel number 0888-021-0-00-007-0. May I ask you to find your name and address for the record, please?
Andrea Wong with HSB Architect at 1215 Old River Road, downtown Cleveland.
Evening again.
Jeff Slakowski, Auburn Career Center, 8140 Auburn Road.
Doug Courtney, CW Courtney Company, 700 Beta Drive, Mefield Village, Ohio.
So if I could ask, could you provide an overview of the project?
Yeah, um, I, I will start and Doug and Andrea are here for any technical questions that, that I can answer. Once you hear about the overview of the project. If you remember about a year ago, Auburn Career Center stood before this body. We were looking at a project to build a physical agility training site at the rent house that we own across from the main campus building on Auburn Road. There were many additions that were added to that project that made it much more costly than, than we had recommended, that we would help people do at that site. Between stormwater management and dragways being added and counterfire lines and other things done with, with the lot. Uh, we figured we would better spend that money on something that was self-contained and much more durable, long-lasting for the, the career center and the community. Uh, so we went with a Conex container, uh, fire simulator instead. They basically get semi-truck trailers and bolt them together into, uh, very search and rescue, um, operation type stuff on the inside. Uh, there still will be a stair tower, uh, completely self-imposed inside of the, the same material, uh, that, that the containers are made from. And it'll be a much more durable and efficient space for us to conduct the same type of trainings that we were looking to do and adding fire simulator along with it. Uh, also on the grounds will be the physical agility training course as well. It will be adjacent to the tower side of the, of the fire simulator. And we're also adding a outdoor construction site on the, I guess would be the, the west end of the, the project. All right, so we are combining a couple of projects that we had separately before this, this, this body a year ago. Still using the same purposes with the fire, the physical agility training center. It's not just for Auburn Career Center, it's for the outline region. Um, fire departments do need to do continuing education, updating certifications. Um, I, I've used the example that even Ashkenyula County Fire Departments need to drive past Auburn Career Center and Concord Township to go to Tri-C and Pahrump in order to get the training that they would be able to get right here. Um, so it will be a benefit to Auburn, but it'll also be a benefit to the, the township, um, and, and the, the greater region.
Very good. Good, thank you. Before we get into the board comments and questions related to this, I'm sure the board members, the prior project. So in true, in scope, I don't want to just begin, in scope, it's not exactly the same.
It's actually more.
More.
Yeah, yeah. The, the, the fire simulator is the, the biggest addition to the actual entire site. That simulator is another prop, if you will, that Auburn Career Center does not currently use. And our public safety programs need to find either other locations that we can get that live fire training done at, such as, uh, Willoughby Fire Department has one that they received a grant from and as part of that grant, they have to loan it out to other training, training sites, training facilities to be able to use because they are in such rare access. So we, we also filed a request in the last biennial, um, state capital budget. Um, we asked for $600,000 that would potentially pay for the majority of this project, if not all, and we were granted $350,000. We were very satisfied with that, but also in, in, in receiving that money, we do have to share the site as well, um, with those that, that could use it for their training.
Great, thank, thank you.
Sure.
The construction training
Yes.
Center, can you describe that?
Yeah, we were approved, um, for a project that would have been at another site on our campus next to the, what's called the Industrial Arts Building. It's the newest building that was built just south of the main campus building. Um, and we were going to have a covered, uh, area where our construction programs could go out and, and do their, do their training. That happened right before, um, the pandemic. And it was supposed to be a steel structure. And the cost for, um, purchasing the steel on that tripled. So what was a $150,000 project turned into a $450,000 project. And, uh, we just couldn't stomach spending taxpayer dollars on that. So when we decided to move the physical agility and first trainer, uh, first responders training facility to, uh, the, the site behind the Art Culture Center on Gerda Road, uh, we thought that we could add a scaled down version of that same thing that we, you know, kind of said we were going to do for our construction programs. But essentially just make it a gravel, um, flat space that they can build temporary structures on top of, um, and, and things alike, rather than have a Taj Mahal. Over expensive piece of, uh, land or a, a property that, that just can see right in time.
Okay, this is training in the trades.
Training in the trades, yeah, building sheds, um, you know, digging footers. Any, any type of, uh, yeah, trade, construction, uh, training.
Good, good, thank you. Heather, can I ask any comments from the staff?
No, I mean, this was a fairly straightforward project regarding zoning wise. They did, um, amend, get a conditional use permit on the border zoning appeals and a variance on the tower, uh, the height of the training tower. I did submit the project to all the other review agencies and got minimal comments back. Um, Stormwater had a list of comments mostly related to the basin, um, but they did have an interesting question whether or not you were going to be, um, whether or not in the fire simulator building, if you're going to extinguish fires in there and, you know, are you going to, so I'm curious what the answers to that.
The answer is, the answer is pretty straightforward. Doug, Doug asked me the same question. It was the only, it was the only question out of those, out of those eight or nine that he couldn't answer himself. Um, so there is, there is a, uh, a water suppression system inside of it. It is not, um, it is not, how do we say? Connected to the water supply. Thank you, Doug. But there is, in, in the instance that we did need to, uh, when they start the training, they hook a fire hose up to the simulator and should they need to turn the fire hydrant on, they do. And it, and it, the, the, the fire hose then is connected to the internal system of, of sprinklers that's in there.
And then will there be a floor drain? How are you going to drain that line?
I don't know the answer to that.
Don't write the floor drain in there.
Okay, well, yeah, there, there probably won't be a floor drain.
Some kind of.
There's plenty of doors and all that stuff that, that you can't come out. Yeah.
No, I, I really didn't have any other comments. Other, you know, they're going to use the existing parking lot, um, I would assume for the, the students and
Correct.
agencies that are coming and can use the site.
Yeah, the, the only wood that's burned is, has to be a special grade, a certain high level grade of OSB, uh, plywood. So there are concerns about any contaminants being in it. Are also, are not an issue. It's clean wood.
Heather, did not the fire chief, fire department review this?
Um, yeah, they did.
I don't see any.
Just a comment, just that it, yeah, very straightforward that the, the existing roadways and hydrants, you know, are acceptable.
Okay. Well, that's a first. I've heard using a hydrant to pressurize a fire suppression system.
Yeah, it's pretty standard in the field.
It is.
For that simulator, yes.
And I presume the programming is such that the activities aren't going on concurrently?
No.
They're not building a wood shed while there's a fire going?
No, there would not be. Correct.
Something like that. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Heather. Any, for the members here for comments, questions? Frank?
I do. Since this is the simulator, you said you're just going to be burning wood?
Yes.
So your training wouldn't consist of hazardous material that you might run into in a home with all the plastic and stuff like that that a firefighter might encounter?
Yeah, they're not allowed to train with that.
Not allowed to. So what about the smoke that eventually comes from starting a fire? Does that get, I don't know if they have a filtering for it or just go into the atmosphere?
Yeah, there's, there's vents through the top, but I mean, it, it pretty much stays in there, um, while they're in their training.
Does it?
Yeah. Yeah, that's all part of the training. They, they want to be in full gear. They want to have all their bunker gear on. And, uh, they want, you know, the, the densest, thickest smoke that they, that they can generate while they're inside, so it's
Well, I can understand.
Live fire training.
Yeah, I can understand that. Makes sense. But I was thinking of the after burning of all that material in there, where does that go? It stays contained inside the building? And just to
During the training and then, yeah, when, when, when the training's, I'm sorry for cutting you off. And when the training, when the training's complete, then, you know, it's opened up and it goes into the atmosphere.
Thank you.
Sure. You're welcome.
Thank you, Frank Hyrum. When we had the other construction facility, it was covered.
Yes, sir.
And it had drop down electrical. This doesn't appear to have any electrical to it?
It, it will have some power. There will be, uh, it, it's going to have to because we have, you know, table saws and drills and that are, that are all, um, you know, need, need to be plugged in. Um, so there will be, I believe on the light pole facades.
We're going to provide some powers throughout where the, you know, light poles are located. It might not be here on this line, but when we go for permit, this will be part of the, through the.
Okay, that's cool. Everybody's going to plug into the light pole?
Yes.
Right?
The power will be running from the quarter.
Okay, yeah, sure. No, I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, Hiram.
Oh, yeah, oh. Where, where's the, does the pod come into play at all?
Not for this project.
Okay. You have another project that it's going to come in and play for?
We'll be back in a month or two. Well, this group, it'll probably be a few months.
Okay.
Thank you, Hiram. Andy? Comments, questions?
No. No, not really.
Thank you, Andy. Rich?
Uh, just a couple, Jeff, um,
Sure.
I noticed just west of that property, there were a couple of residents right at the, at your property. And then across the street, there's that Raleigh Street with a number of homes. Is there going to be any kind of a noise pollution or smoke pollution that would bother any of your neighbors?
Well, currently, um, there, there will be smoke, yes. But there is right now. We have flashover trailer back there. We have car fire simulators. You know, uh, this, this project also includes some, what are called This, this project also includes some, what are called propane pops, props. So there's a propane tank that shoots flames through the, through the, through the valve. There's a Christmas tree simulator, if you will. We're going to get a new car fire simulator. So those will be set on the gravel for, but there are also projects that we, that we currently do.
Okay. So you don't see any problem with the neighbors?
We haven't had any yet.
Okay, good.
I mean, they might be a little bit extra noise when the construction program is out there. There's probably enough distance that it's tapping when, when they're hammering, and they might hear a little whir of a saw, you know, out in the distance, but it's not like they're right next door on top of it.
No explosions or anything like that, right?
God, I hope not.
All right, thank you. That's all I wanted to know.
Thank you, Rich. For me, because I was going to echo Rich's question, it's a good question. The site itself is pretty excluded from remote, I should say, as opposed to the alternative site.
Yes, and I know that was a concern of the township.
Yeah, yeah. So this, this is the waste of site wise.
Like I said, we, we, we saw the conditions and the recommendations and the hesitation of the township, both this and the Board of Appeals. And so we kind of regrouped and rethought about it, and, well, with this cost, we can really get even more than what we were trying to get, and let's just be smarter about it and, and put it in a spot that's a little less conspicuous and, and it's already being used to that purpose anyway.
So a question for Heather. So this, really, people don't realize Auburn Career Center is a sprawling, sprawling campus. So with additional programming, is there any concern of how do they handle the parking for these responders coming from Nashville County, coming for a program? I mean, is it, how, there isn't any additional parking added for the program that you're adding, program without additional parking? Is that a consideration?
I understand your question, your concern, and the, the parking requirements in the zoning regulation really don't address this particular, this specific type of expansion of the school use because we're talking outdoor areas, so hopefully what's there will be sufficient for what your needs are. I mean, they've got plenty of property in front of the Horticulture Building. If there's a need for additional parking, but based on this project, or wasn't, I mean, can that really trigger additional parking on the site?
Yeah, I guess I would have to agree if we're going to warrant a traffic count or traffic impact analysis and generating trips on something that is probably fairly unpredictable. Okay. Those were my only questions or comments. Starter construction?
Barring a approval tonight, we hope to have start, we hope to get started this fall, and the fire simulator is slated to be completed the last week of December onsite, and, you know, depending on how the winter goes and that, we would definitely want this up and running for any of our spring courses. And courses, some of the fire programs have already started, and they run just about nine months, and the last thing that they do is live fire training, so this could potentially, you know, short of anything going drastically wrong, be the first class that we do 100% in-house at Auburn Career Center without having to use any outside facilities or systems.
Sorry, I got to go back to the parking question again because it reminded me of the, the access road off of, the access drive labeled Horticultural Center off of Girdle is now going to take presumably truck traffic.
Yeah, it does now.
Does now?
It does now, and it was recently paved. I think that was done two summers ago. So, yeah, we own two fire trucks that are currently housed back there and drive on that, on that road quite a bit.
Right, so again, that goes to the question, there's no parking. You're coming in off of Girdle, right? You just go back there with the buildings, there's no parking?
In front of, in front of Horticulture Center, there's about 30 parking lots.
Oh, in front, okay, sorry.
So, I mean, that has been sufficient. When there's been a little bit larger groups, I'm not going to sit here in line and say that there haven't been cars on the grass and along the driveway, and it works.
Jeff, are, is the parking lot on Auburn, do folks, can I still drive through that back to this area?
They can, yeah.
Okay, is that still an option? Like, where do the construction students normally park, like, for class? So like, where?
So they would park up at the main campus and, because we have a shop there.
In the Industrial Arts Building? The newest one that...
No, it's, it's in the main building.
Oh.
8140 Auburn Road.
Okay.
And then there is a land bridge that goes over the ravine and toward the Horticulture Center, so it's a five-minute walk.
Yeah, it's pretty, pretty close.
Okay, thank you. The staff report is recommending a conditional approval based upon the applicant addressing the stormwater comments. We've kind of touched on that earlier. I presume there's nothing out of the ordinary there, Doug?
No.
To address.
Other than the fire hose.
Other than that? Okay, thank you. What are the wishes of the board? Motion? Yes. I asked, what are the wishes of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to conditionally approve site plan application number 54 with the conditions noted in the staff report related to stormwater.
We have a motion for conditional approval. Do we have a second? I'll second. We have a motion and a second for conditional approval of application number 54. Heather, call and roll.
Mr. Langfelter?
Yes.
Mr. Repper?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Eifley?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Application stands approved. Congratulations, good luck with the project.
Thank you. Move the floor.
Jeff.
You too.
Okay. The next item we have on our agenda is related to old business. Admittedly, at least for myself, I'm ill-prepared to, to review this, taken under consideration this evening, but at the same time, just to overview where we're at today, and correct me if I'm wrong, members or Heather, but in, for the August meeting is when we first brought up the work sessions for Section 1622. The August meeting, we began that discussion, we tabled it, and moved on to the September meeting. We continued the discussion, primarily focusing on recommendations you had noted for the Capital Use District, as well as prior recommendations from the planning consultants, Ryan and Jeremy, that you had provided us with. This evening on the agenda, we have a continuing work session to review Section 16, PUD and RCD District, as well as the Capital District Table of Uses. As I was thinking about this, colleagues, I was wondering to pick off one of these and put only that one on our next agenda so that we can best prepare for that, unless we get compounded with 47 site plans, but I don't, I don't know. I'm just trying to consider the time element required to really give this the focus that it needs. I don't know how, what the board might feel about moving this forward or, or wanting to address one of these items at least beginning of discussion this evening. I'm, I'm pretty open to what your suggestions might be. It's not that we have to be very aggressive, it's not, we're not punching the clock on this, but if I had, if I had to comment, I would probably like to see the Capital District Table of Uses be front and center. Seems to be prominent in my mind to discuss, to discuss those. I don't know what the other members might feel.
No, I agree, Mr. Chairman, especially with so many things that are starting to happen, so that's coming to this board, and I see more coming quickly. That makes much sense to me also.
Ask Rich, Andy, any comments, Capital District, would you like to continue that discussion this evening or...
I'm not really prepared myself either, but...
Yeah, okay. Andy?
I'm good with putting it off.
Putting it off, okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm inclined to, I'm inclined to say, to do that as well and concentrate on the Capital District Table of Uses. Heather, you had provided some information at the September meeting. I could ask you for preparation for the next meeting to resend that to us? I have my copies, but we could refresh it?
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. I did, in regards to the other Section 16, that was somewhat tabled because I had met with Mike Lucas regarding some of those amendments, and he still needed to circle back with me regarding those. That's why we tabled those last month, and I don't have an update on that, so that actually, that's not a priority. I'll still kind of work on that with Mike in the background, and then once we have something more definitive on what we were originally discussing, which is not fresh in my mind right now, we can continue that at some point.
Very good.
But even in regards to, like, tonight's, I did do a little background on, I know you had asked me last month, Mr. Chairman, to maybe talk about overlay districts?
Overlay district.
And how maybe we could use that in the zoning resolution. So I did prepare just a few comments, like some background information regarding just plan unit, plan unit developments in general and like how overlays have been used. It's not directly related to the uses in the Capital District, but I could just kind of briefly go over that if you guys want to, and then...
Yeah, I'm inclined to, I'm inclined to just a brief overview without us taking it, any much further than that.
Yeah, it's more of just, you know, these are some planning concepts, some background information, so...
Please, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, so I know that we were focused on our Capital District and the innovative site plan development, and the innovative site plan development that we currently have in the zoning resolution is a type of plan unit development that the Board of Zoning Appeals would approve by issuing, issuing a conditional use permit application and a development plan before it could move forward. Townships derive their authority to adopt plan unit developments from the Ohio Revised Code, Section 519021, and basically there's four options that a township can utilize when they're adopting plan unit developments. The first would be that the trustees adopt the PUD regulations that do not automatically apply to a certain piece of property, that, then, so you make a text amendment and you write in all the standards. Then, once they're effective in your zoning resolution, a property owner makes an application to rezone their property to that PUD. So that's exactly how we do, like, the RCD developments. So right now, we have the option in the zoning resolution, and if the property owner makes an application to move forward with that type of plan development. The other, the other way that you can set up a plan unit development is that an application can be submitted by the property owners to the township that would designate their property as a PUD, and it also sets the standards of that PUD. So in essence, they're requesting a zoning map and text amendment that applies only to their property. The third option is that the trustees can adopt PUD regulations and amend the zoning map to rezone the property actually to PUD. But the underlying zoning district regulations continue to apply on that piece of property unless the zoning commission or the trustees actually approve an application of a property owner within that district to make it subject to the PUD regulations. This has been referred to as, some people, as an overlay district. The last option, which is currently what we have in regards to the innovative site plan development, is that the trustees adopted the PUD standards and set them up as a conditional use. So in any of those four different options for PUDs, the PUD still only applies to a piece of property at the election of the property owner. You can't force someone to do a plan unit development. So back in 2017, some of you were still, were on the board then, some of you were not. Can't remember, Hyrum, if you were. Sorry, I apologize.
I don't think, I might have been an alternate.
Yeah, so in 2017, the township was considering changing how the town center plan unit development would actually be reviewed and approved, so rather than doing it as a conditional use, they were going to change that. At the time, staff worked with the consultant and the trustees to put together a zoning text and map amendment that actually adopted revised PUD regulations and rezoned a portion of the Capital District, a portion of the RD2 District, and the Gateway Business District to the innovative site plan development overlay district. So at the time, the township was considering this option since not all the property in, in the underlying zoning districts were zoned Capital District, which was mainly the area that the concept was being proposed for the town center. The proposed amendments also took into consideration the town center master plan and its recommendations. The overlay district was another option rather than setting it up, setting the PUD up as a conditional use. But as I stated previously, whether the plan, whether the plan development is set up as a conditional use or an overlay, the township cannot require a landowner to develop the property in accordance with the PUD regulations unless they submit the application. But there are other uses of overlay districts that aren't necessarily planned unit development districts, so I have just a little bit of information about overlay districts in general that are not planned unit development and how some communities have adopted those in their zoning that do automatically apply to the underlying zoning district.
Please distinguish for me PUD and overlay. Are you saying PUD, overlay?
Yeah.
Meaning?
Yep.
Underlying zoning remains and a PUD doesn't? Am I correct?
With the PUD, the underlying zoning remains unless the applicant submits an application to, to utilize the PUD. On an overlay district, think about it like as in you have your Capital District and all your standards in there, and then you create an additional kind of district that overlays maybe one or two districts or a natural feature in your community or possibly historic area where you want to impose additional design review standards that aren't necessarily tied to just one zoning district, but maybe span a corridor, and, and it's easier to then amend and create this overlay and write the text in the zoning resolution only one time that spans over there, an area, rather than going in and amending three different districts and saying it only is applicable in this area of that district or this area of that district. So one example would be maybe in a community where they have a large river that they want to protect and they want to institute additional setbacks or buffer vegetations just along this one river, and so you have your underlying zoning that really dictates the uses that are allowed in that district, and then you can impose additional standards for development that do automatically apply for any future development within that area. It's useful when you're, you're trying to institute some kind of regulation that spans multiple districts. Oftentimes, you're not seeing what, usually overlay districts do not include uses, like permitted uses and conditionally permitted uses. Normally... Normally, it's like additional setbacks or parking standards or landscaping requirements or design regulations. So, and I know that last month we were talking about how do we look at the uses in the Capital District versus the uses in the ISPD District and do we look at them simultaneously or how do we address them? I think you were kind of going down, well, isn't, you know, this whole overlay doesn't, you know, and so. You know, I think if the issue that the board and the township is having with the actual uses that are being allowed in the Capital District, then I think we need to address that directly in the Capital District. And then if that means then we have to take a second look at what are we allowing in the planned unit development district, then that would need to be, you know, a second thing to look at. What am I going to say here? But if, but if, but if part of the issue is we don't like how they're developing the lots, like the setbacks of the buildings or the parking areas under the, under the existing Capital District, then we, we really should address those setback standards in, in the Capital District and, and in the overlay if it's not going to be, if we want them to be the same. Like if we, if we want parking behind buildings and buildings up front regardless if they're planned unit development, then we need to change the, the underlying zoning in the Capital District. Or if we're okay with, you know, the parking in front and the buildings behind, which I know the Board of Zoning Appeals has already approved a variance to that for a project that will be in front of you guys next month. Right, so, so I think it's, what are we trying to achieve by looking at, you know, what are the issues with the Capital District? I think what our main focus was, was the uses initially, that there were some questions on some of the uses that were still allowable in that district. But the next step would be like, do we need to make then changes to like how the sites are actually developed themselves as well? And I know that there were recommendations from, from 17 and the Town Center Report that they were challenging, that we wanted to, to move forward with. But I think we need to kind of take small steps so we can see some successes in that because we are seeing a lot more activity on Cryle and Capital. And it's going to be a lot faster if, if the uses are the main issue to make those small amendments than to start looking at the whole innovative site plan development.
Okay.
That process would take much, much longer, other than maybe focusing on uses in there and.
Well, thank you, Heather. I mean, I, I agree, the uses seem to be foremost. But I know the discussion, at least for me, the ISPD in large part. That's right. Oh, that, that, that it's, it's a conditional use. It just, it just, I just still don't.
Understand, yeah. And that is something that, you know, like I mentioned, we were entertaining the idea at one point of changing that to, to be a more similar process than like, as to how we do the RCDs. Where it would be a two-step where they come to this board, get a, you know, a recommendation and then go to the trustees for a final say in that. And maybe that's the more, the appropriate review process to do that. The other part of that is, right now, you can only do the Town Center in, in the Capital District. So, you know, is that still a viable option just within that district? Should it be a larger area? It's easier just to kind of go with what it is right now, but we could look at changing the process along with changing, you know, some of the uses in there. Taking it out of the, you know, being a conditional use, going to the BZA might be more palatable for a project coming forward, knowing that it would be in front of two, two bodies that would make a decision and we have our electeds making that final say on, you know, whether or not that Town Center PUD can move forward rather than putting that on the shoulders of the BZA to make that tough decision.
But you don't see any conflict if we were to take up the table of uses in the Capital District and then forego or the ISPD until?
I think that we might want to look at those a little bit the same because there could be, and I'd be happy to be a little bit more prepared on that next month because I don't recall off the top of my head. Because I know some of the uses we were saying that shouldn't be in the Capital might also already be still allowed under the ISPD, but possibly not. Yeah, so I think we still might want to be looking at them at the same time. And, you know, if we see, oh, this is going to be an issue, let's, let's propose to take it out. We should do that. Or if we should add it in or.
Thank you, Heather. Would it be too much trouble to ask for that more in advance of the November meeting so that we can get?
Oh, not at all, yeah. Yeah, I can give it to you. Yeah, I can email it to you in advance.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Packages usually don't go out until the week before in case we have SPR, but I'd be happy to email you the stuff sooner so you have more time to.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much.
And if you want any information, I, I found some helpful like documents out there that kind of discussed overlays. I'd be happy to email those to the boards if you want to read through them, so.
I'm just finding it interesting, but also challenging.
Yeah.
To kind of do the right thing, kind of make proper judgment, but looking at it concurrently, I think, I think I agree. That makes sense. Any questions, comments for Heather?
I would think the most, the more we can keep it simplistic, the better off we are.
Yeah.
You know, when we start talking about overlays and all that kind of stuff, after a while, I can see it becoming more and more complicated, personally.
Okay, well, thank you. Members, thank you. There being no other business, let me just refer to our next meeting. It's the first of November 2022. There's no other, no other business to come forward this body. This meeting stands a jerk.